Oh, say can you see by the long, surely light, was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars through the perilous night? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the hoarse cheer, it grew through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Howard. Any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? No new town meeting members? All right, let's do our test vote. Get your clickers out. Soon Ms. Smithsill-Lathwood is ready. Is corn the most produced crop in the world? One for yes, two for no. Is corn the most produced crop in the world? One for yes, two for no. Do they grow more corn than anything else? One for yes, two for no. Go ahead and vote. Oh, you got a tally? Ah, the answer is yes. Corn is number one, wheat is number two, and rice is third. So now we have geography, geology, and social studies for you guys to study up on. Wheat, and then rice.
It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 18, 2016, at 8:00 p.m.
All in favor, please say yes. Opposed? Okay, then let's finish up. Announcements and resolutions. Mr. O'Connor.
James O'Connor, member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee in Precinct 19. I simply had a question that I'd like to ask the moderator to pull the sense of the meeting. We have organizational meetings to elect the clerk and the chair of each precinct, and for some precincts, it's on the fourth meeting. Hopefully, next year, we'll be out of here in four meetings. But who knows when we'll be out. But the thought I had is because many precincts have organizational meetings prior to town meeting, where they, you know, get together with their precincts and there's members of the quorum fulfilled there, or we could have it on the first night. But I was told that we always did it this way. That's why we always do three nights, seven per group, because it might be too many people trying to elect on one night. So, Mr. Moderator, could you ask the meeting whether we'd like to have it earlier or on the first night of town meeting, so we could have a chair elected on the first night?
All in favor of doing it on the first night, from here on out, say yes. Opposed? Good. Miss, Madam Clerk, can you make that happen next year? She'll make that happen. And if you haven't organized yet, do so out here. In case you hadn't heard, Governor Baker has signed the special legislation put forth last year under Article 15 of our annual town meeting to put the Director of Assessments and the Assessors' Office under the supervision of the town manager. These changes are now part of the Town Manager Act. The bill was implemented with the help of Senator Donnelly, who co-sponsored with Sean Garbley and Dave Rogers. And I understand, okay, so the governor then approved it. So what we did last year actually passed, and now it's all under Adam's capable hands. Good luck. Any other reports of committees? None. Reports of committees? None. Mr. Tosti?
Moved that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
All in favor of laying Article 3 upon the table, please say yes. Opposed? Article 3 is on the table. Last week, we may be, we're not sure, we may have not taken Articles 35 through 42 off the table, so we're just going to do it now.
Moved that Articles 35 through 42 be taken off the table.
All in favor, please say yes. Opposed? Those are off the table, and we're back into the budgets. Someone wanted to talk about inspections. Who was it?
Good evening. Steve Revolak, Precinct 111 Sunnyside Avenue. The Inspection Services has a database of permits that you can examine through the town website. Ah, is this better? Okay. Inspection Services has a data, keeps a database of permits that one can access through the town's website. And looking through the permit database, I noticed that in 2015, the town issued 2,008 building permits, 1,327 electrical permits, and another 1,794 permits for gas and plumbing work. So which, if you think, if you break that down into, yeah, those are big numbers, and if you break them down into 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, that's a building permit every 62 minutes, an electrical permit every 94 minutes, and a gas and plumbing permit every 69 minutes. Mr. Moderator, do you happen to know if 2015 was an unusually busy year for building permits?
Mr. Byrne, can you tell me?
Actually, Steve, I have the from 2007 here. But it has been trending up. It's, more of it is more complex projects as well. But it is, it is going up, yes.
My, my reason for asking was, you know, I think the, the role of inspectional services is, I think inspectional services has an important role to play. And I'm just wondering, do you guys have the resources that, do you feel like you have the resources that you need?
I think, yes, we do. We, we, actually, this year, we have increased a little bit on the temporary staffing to help us with inspections when it gets very busy. But, yes, we do the best we can, yeah. But we do, okay.
Okay. Well, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on inspections? Seeing none. Education.
Finance Committee has a new recommendation on two articles. The first one is Article 35, the education budget. It was produced on a one-page sheet last, actually, it might have been a couple of days ago, a couple of meetings ago. What this does is, when the budgets were being put together, the manager, through the Long-Term Planning Committee, and then trying to come to a compromise and agreement through the Long-Term Planning Committee with the school department, made an agreement, which Finance Committee has backed, that if there was any additional funds approved over that, that we projected in Chapter 70, that we would give that overage to the school budget. The House Ways and Means Committee came out in mid-April, when the Finance Committee was finalizing their budget, and they recommended an additional for Arlington, $171,110. Now, at the time, of course, we didn't know if this was going to pass the House, we didn't know what the Senate was going to do. So what we did was, we took that $171,110, and we put it in the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund, Article 56. The House, the full House, agreed with the House Ways and Means Committee recommendation on Chapter 70, and we have it under very good authority that the Senate will follow that lead. And we're reasonably confident, if the House and Senate follow the lead, the governor will sign it. Therefore, our recommendation is to change the appropriation, or to add $171,110 to the fiscal 2017 school budget, bringing that total to $57,172,443. That's 57, 172, 443. Now, when we get to Article 56, I'll make that concurrent reduction at that point to balance out the budget. As you can see, my only comments are, as you could see, as you go along there, the last three years, the, the town has given the school budget an increase of 6.41% in 2015, 5.61% in 2016, and now recommending 6.72% increase in the school budget. I, I believe this is fairly, this is generous. It is the most we can afford. It might even be more than we could afford to do. We are trying to help the school budget through their increases in enrollment, which have been substantial over the last several years. If you take a look, though, at what the effect is on the Appendix D, the five-year plan, you will see that it puts us under severe strain, and that strain keeps getting more and more. So we're, we're trying to help out the school budget as much as we can, and hopefully, this will allow them to take into enrollment, count the enrollment, and also continue to improve the quality of education in the town of Arlington. Thank you.
Mr. Tosti, do you have that writing for us up here? We never got one.
Oh, they were? Okay, we'll look for them. If we don't, I'll find them.
Thank you, Peter Fuller, Precinct 20. Question and a couple of comments. First, in the budget book the School Committee provided us on page 29 in the fourth paragraph, it says, "Part of the budgeted increase is coming from reducing a prior revolving fund balance held by Arlington Community Education." My question is, is this a substantial amount of money? And if it's a one-time piece of funding, how do we replace it next year unless it's being used for a one-time expense?
Diane Johnson, Chief Financial Officer for the School Department. The $250,000 that we're proposing to reduce from the community education program is a one-time thought. The community, the Community Ed Department has been growing over the years, and we've been reinvesting and allowing them to expand programming offers to adults and children. Our summer programs have expanded significantly. And one of the things that's made it possible for these programs to grow in community ed is that we haven't yet established an indirect cost rate. So the school department provides business services for community ed at no charge. And so we see this $250,000 as a way to collect on all the work we've done for them for quite a number of years.
Okay, so is, this is a one-time drawout of that fund?
Yes.
So are we spending it this year on a one-time expense, or is it some, something that's, spending it on something that's ongoing that we're going to have to fill from somewhere else next year?
No, we're planning to use all of these expenditures to boost our, our purchase of curriculum materials that'll be a one-time expense.
Got it, okay. Couple of comments. In last year's Finance Committee report, we were informed that the plan was to step down the annual allowed increase in the regular education budget from 3.5% a year down to 3% a year, which distressed some of us, including me, because it kind of broke the deal with the voters that we'd made back in 2011, the last time we asked them in an override. So I'm happy to see this year that we're going to stay at 3.5%. I think that'll, you know, hold face with the voters and help us fund the schools to the extent that they need to be. Second comment, I'm happy to see the considerable detail in the School Committee's budget book on the funding requests, particularly on the unfunded requests. This is a, a really good way to keep in front of the community what the School Committee's vision for what the school should be, and I hope they'll continue to highlight it going forward, so that we know what we are asking for when they ask for more money in the next override. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nice phone.
Hi, good evening. Linda Hanson, Precinct 7. So I just wanted to spend a minute and build on the analysis that John Deist shared with us the other night about the value of an Arlington public schools education. He talked to us about the, that we are at the top end of student achievement and at the bottom end of per pupil expenditure. And certainly, you know, some of the good things that he talked about was the role of our good, strong fiscal management and oversight, and the long-term planning, and that's certainly all very true. But another factor that I just want you to consider is that we also do that by keeping teacher salaries low. On the slide behind you, what I have is just a recent comparison that came out in the Boston Business Journal in May of, of this year about teacher salaries in comparison with our town meeting 12 communities. And it's not a perfect way to measure, average salaries are not a perfect way to measure teacher salaries, because you don't, it doesn't necessarily reflect the number of teachers on the different steps on the pay scale, but it's certainly a very good rough guide. And what you see here is that Arlington is really at the bottom of this list. In terms of our comparison with our neighbors, we're about 7,500 below Winchester, about 18,800 below Belmont, a little over 8,000 below the state average, and 25,000 less than the top-tier system, Brookline, which is, you know, again, one of our most comparable communities. So while Arlington teachers are really proud of the work that we do together with the community parents and district leaders, with our students in the community, I did just want to point this out and mention that teacher salaries are an important factor to keep in mind when thinking of the long-term viability of a quality school system, and that while we're thinking about all these investments to our buildings, we also need to think about the investments to the personnel and the people that staff the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Downing? Nope, behind you.
Gary Tibbetts, Precinct 5. And I intend to vote for the budget the way it is. And I just had a question. I, the other day, I happened to reread an article in one of the local papers about different grants and stuff that are available, and I was wondering how Arlington pursued them. I found one that really interested me. It's called X-Q. And it was set up by Steve Jobs's wife. It's a $50 million grant with $10 million sections to each town for towns to put in a proposal and, you know, improve their schools, offers professional development opportunities, technology, infrastructure, linked-up students with college credits and things like that. And I was just wondering, has Arlington looked at some of these alternative financing things?
Diane Johnson, Chief Financial Officer for the School Department. The school has a grants officer, Ms. Julie Dunn, and she does pursue every grant opportunity she can. Unfortunately, our demographics don't help us in grant-seeking. We are not a particularly low-income district, and we're a high-performing district. Poor, poorly performing districts tend to be more attractive to grantors.
Okay. All right, I just, but we do.
We do look. We look.
Okay. Did we apply for this one?
I'm not sure if we applied for that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
Brendan O'Day, Precinct 14.
You're on.
I have a slideshow. I had a question just about, that Mr. Tosti had talked about, the, the difficulties we're going to form, we're going to have in five or six years with the, the falling off of the, the budget. And the pressure that the transferring these funds the School Department has created. So as they get the slideshow, it's, it's only five slides. In 2012, we passed a, an override. It was a three-year override. Immediately, it became a five-year override. And the, the objective was to take money from the funds that came in over the first couple of years, build up a stabilization fund, and then, over the next few years, draw that down. Nothing yet. So at the, at the end of the first, the first period of the override, we had a wonderful surprise, in that the GIC helped us have fantastic finances. We saved a few million dollars. We're saving millions of dollars ever since. Mr. Gooding, do you have it? Okay. That's good. And, and that was fantastic. And, and so instead of having a five-year override that was going to end in 2018, we pushed it out, just with the GIC, we pushed it out to 2019. Date certain, it was going to be a zero. We're going to have zero funds in the override stabilization fund by 2018. And this is according to the 2012 finance report. In the 2013 report, let's see if it comes up ever. That's okay. In the 2013 report, so in 2013, we're supposed to have $10 million in 2014. Hey, hey, oh, hang on. Go back. Okay, so the happy face, see, see why I needed this slide? It has a happy face. The happy face is the happy surprise, and the, the next star, the sun, the green sun, is the, is the goal for the next year. We're hoping that we'll get to that star. Okay? And so the next slide, please. So we had another happy face, surprise, and the, the override stabilization fund got up to, it was supposed to be 16 million, but we had a happy face surprise of $2 million. And you'll see that the happy face is around 18 million there. But we saw that it was going to level off to the purple star, and it was going to be, it was going to be empty by 2019. That was a prediction back in 2014 report. Next slide? Oh. So in 2015, it, it was supposed to be 18 million in the 2016, but actually, we got to $21 million, which was another positive surprise, the happy face. If you can see the happy face, it's starting to encroach on the words. And we're expected to go down $700,000 in that override stabilization fund, going into a severe dive toward an empty fund by 2021. Date certain. Next slide, please. Boom. Another happy surprise. Instead of going down $700,000, we, we are going over the words, and we are at $23 million now in the override stabilization fund, which is fantastic. And the question I have is, why the steep, steep dive coming up? So we've had this wonderful, all these surprises going up, 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 happy, 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 And we're still going to end in 2021 with zero. So what's causing, what's caused, so my question, I guess, is, what's causing that severe cliff that we're diving off of? And, and is this really a severe pressure that we are forecasting?
Do you want to do it, Al? Al first, and Adam? Do you want to take it out?
This is the last page of the finance report.
If you take a look at, at Appendix D, we've been focusing on fiscal 2021, I think, for the last two years. We've taken, we, we've tried to keep spending under control. The town manager's budgets have been reduced from 3.5% down to 3.25% the last couple of years. We've taken some of the conservative elements out of our projection, and we haven't had a recession. We could still have a recession, but we haven't. And so right now, you, you build up the, the deficit, so finally, we're able to put some more money aside for '17. But then in '18, once that thing starts piling up, you, you get a $2.5 million deficit one year, now you get, then it goes to a five, and it keeps multiplying to that effect. It's, it's been about the same projection for the last couple of years. And it's, it's fortunate now, because we have all of these debt exclusions we need to pass. So we're going to have one set of debt exclusions, which is going to add about $250, if they pass in June, to the average household. We're going to have another debt exclusion two years after that, probably, for the high school, which will probably be at least that amount, maybe more. And then two years after that, in '20, we'll have another, we'll have the override. So it's, you know, it's, it's not in structural balance. It's been in structural balance, but then it keeps, it keeps going up. The pensions keep going up, the health insurance keeps going up, and we've been adding to the school budget considerably. So I, I'm not quite sure, you know, it's a happy face if you're only looking at it a year or two out. It's not a happy face if you're looking three or four years out.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Janice Weaver, Precinct 21. I just have a question for someone in the School Department about, I feel all the teachers, I was always told the teachers don't make enough money for the surrounding community. But a frequent visitor to our office has mentioned that there are other perks that they get that actually do bring them up to a comparable position for other towns. I just have a question there, but I have another question after.
Dr. Bodie?
Kathleen Bodie, Superintendent. Thought you were waiting, I was waiting for your next question. I'm not quite certain what you're referring to. Teachers in our district have their salary. They also have health benefits, which are available to all employees in the town of Arlington. And one very small benefit is that there is some partial tuition reimbursement when they pursue courses either they pursue courses, either in pursuit of a master's, though most of our teachers, vast majority, have a master's, but additional courses. But beyond that, I can't think of any other benefits they would have that would be considered salary perks.
So, you're saying that they are lower, have a lower pay scale than the surrounding communities?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Thank you. My other question concerns the $250 that we're paying for the new overrides and everything. Is that per quarter? Mr. Tostie?
Mr. Tostie?
I didn't think so.
A little off the scope, but what the heck.
No, that's an annual figure, and it's only when all the projects get fully done. So, I mean, all the projects don't instantly go like that, like the middle school won't even start until June of '18. So, once all the projects are fully implemented, I believe it's approximately $250 for an average single-family home.
Per year?
Per year.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Precinct 21. I just wanted to make, I thought, I think that Mr. O'Day's happy-face model is really a very interesting one. And it's one that he's shared with me in the past, that I've commented and worked with him, or I gave him my thoughts on it. And I think it is very illustrative of what's been going on. And we have had several good years in a row. And there's a couple of things that I want people, that I think are helpful to think about. One is, is that when you build a model like that, you, like, you know, a financial model, looking forward on finances several years in a row, you want to think about how your model might fail, because you're never going to be completely right. And when you, your model fails, you want it to fail in a way that you're prepared for. You don't want it to fail in a way that is unexpected. And so, what that means is that the model that we use is inherently a little bit conservative. It's designed such that if several things break against us, that we don't have to do anything traumatic to the budget. And what's happened over the last few years is, we've had several things that broke in our favor. So, I think the only thing that I disagree with him about is that I would never describe the things that are being talked about as four years in the future as date certain. They're anything but date certain. We talk about them as, this is our best guess, but it's a model, and it's four years ahead. The other thing, and in particular, I want to talk about, just mention that the one thing that I think is broken in our favor more than people appreciate is the amount of new building that has happened in town. Because remember, we're limited by Proposition 2.5 on everything that exists. But every time somebody builds an addition, or remodels their kitchen, or, you know, does anything like that, that's stuff that happens essentially outside of 2.5. And we use a fairly conservative number for the amount of new building, and only recently have we begun to put that up. So, I really appreciate Mr. O'Day bringing it forward, because I do think that that's something that's really helpful for people to understand, because it shows how our model is good and how our model is bad. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 11. I move to terminate debate on the Article I associated matters.
On education budget. Yes. All in favor of terminating debate on education budget, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is terminated. We have, I'm going to take the substitute vote right now on the education budget while we're on it, instead of doing it at the end. Mr. Jones has presented a written substitute motion on 35, presented by Mr. Tostie. It's seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That budget is so amended. That ends education and brings us to libraries. Who wanted to talk about libraries? Sir?
Len Carden, Precinct 20. I understand that last summer, for the first time, we had weekend hours at the library. I wondered if we could get a quick report on how those went.
Is our library director here?
Yes, she is. Andrea Nicolai, Director of Libraries. Weekend hours last summer were a huge hit. There were approximately 400 people through the door each hour, and circulation of 1,000 items during those three hours from 9:00 to 12:00. So, yes, they were successful.
Thank you. So, I wanted to use this as a point of information about partly what Mr. O'Day was talking about, but also what we have faced as a town when we're making budgeting decisions. Because right now, the way we do budgeting is we have this formula, and everything goes against this formula, is, are we increasing by 3% or not? And we've been able to squeeze out some really good things, like Saturday hour, like summer weekend hours at the library, that are really beneficial for the town. And these are things that I think, even if it did push us into an override, we can go to the voters and say, our town really needs this. We need to do this. We need to have an override to do this. So, I understand, you know, the concerns about everybody about when the override is going to be, how big it's going to be, but we can't let that totally overshadow all of our decision-making. So, as we go forward with things, looking at the things in the school budget that weren't funded, and there's things all across town that aren't being funded because of these concerns about an override down the road. So, I do think we need some balance. I would like us to get a little bit away from the formula budgeting, and take a look seriously at what we need to do and what we want to do as a town, and then, we can explain that to the voters on the day that the override does come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Seuss?
Jennifer Seuss, Precinct 3. Last year, I stood up and mentioned that the Friends of the Fox Library has a bunch of money that they are dying to spend, and they would like also to have Saturday hours in the East at the Fox Library. And they have the money for it. It would not cost taxpayers a dime. They would like to do some renovations. And I know that there's been negotiations back and forth, but I'd like to encourage the library director and the town to work to spend this money that the Friends of the Fox is dying to spend on the Fox Library. Thank you.
Can you guys see the spending that money? Anyone else on libraries? Sir?
Daniel Jalca, Precinct 6. So, I'm also served by the Fox Library, and I was just looking over these figures before Jennifer got up, and as far as I can tell, the Fox Library, Friends of Fox, is the only, like, community-driven surplus, funding-wise, to the whole library's budget. Is that, is that an accurate understanding?
Director of Libraries is going to tell us.
Andrea Nicolai, Director of Libraries. No, that's not quite accurate. We get funding from the municipality, as well as the Friends of the Robbins Library, the Friends of the Fox Library, and Massachusetts State Aid, and the Foundation. Pardon me.
Mr. Moderator, while she's up here, if I may ask, is there a reason why the other Friends of the Libraries are not included as a line item here, or am I missing them?
I can answer that. So, the Friends of Fox offset is for Fridays at the Fox Library. The Friends of Fox fund salaries and services on Fridays at the Fox, and that's why the Fox Library is open on Fridays.
Wonderful. So, one of the things I've noticed as a resident of East Arlington, is I'm so grateful to have the Fox Library in East Arlington. I'm also very grateful to have the Robbins Library, both great libraries. And I guess I just, I'm taking this opportunity to say that if we have this passionate, you know, quote-unquote, customer base for the Fox Library, that's, obviously, you know, Jennifer said that there's some money there. One of the things I've noticed as a resident of East Arlington is, as glad as I am to have the Fox Library in my neighborhood, it does feel like a missed opportunity that it's not open more often. And often, when I go with my kids, and I say, what are we going to do today? Oh, can we go to the library? And, you know, sometimes it works out, and sometimes it's, they're just closed that day. And it doesn't feel like a totally working, positive use of a town-owned building for that space not to be used as often as it can. So, I would encourage anybody who has the power to help make some of those funds, go to keeping the library open to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in libraries? Okay, the next budget held was retirement. Who wanted to speak about that? Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. It won't be long once the slide's up there.
So, you folks are all providing these slides to them days ago.
Last week.
Last week, okay.
I would not, I would not do that to them.
Good, thank you. I'll just pause the clock for a second, unless you've got any jokes or something.
Did you lose it? Yeah, that's it. That's it. Well, that's it. I'm sorry, I just, that one slide. So, I wanted to use, so, last meeting, Ms. Brazil presented a report on Vision 2020, and I co-chair the Fiscal Resource Task Group. And I thought this was a particularly appropriate way to introduce my little short discussion related to the Contributory Retirement Board and the retirement allocation that we're going to provide both here and also with the OPED budget that we'll pass later. The total, about 12.7 or 12.8 million dollars total for a fund that the Contributory Retirement Board manages, that's north of, with that money, north of $140 million, approximately the same size as the total town budget. That's how much they, of one-year town budget. That's how much they have under management. So, but I wanted to first say, first off, I think if you read this, that this is a great reflection of what this town meeting, this town has done this year. To wit, we values Arlington's efficient delivery of public services, providing for the common good, the benefit from the services, and the responsibility of taxation will be equitably distributed amongst us. We'll be known for our sound physical planning, the thoughtful open process by which realistic choices are made by the town. And the various committees involved in the school committee expansion and all those things, I think, really espouse this town goal, which is part of our bylaws, one of the many, each one of the Vision 2020 goals is part of our bylaws, put it back in there in the 1990s. So, I think we should, you know, you should all be applauded in the committees that are responsible, but this should all be commended for adhering to these things. Now, as far as the Contributory Retirement Board goes, I'll admit that I've been contentious at times, critical of their actions. But I was greatly, enjoyed a nice discussion with board member, Mr. Viskey, who's the comptroller and ex-official member, and Mr. Rich Greco at last meeting on Wednesday. And they agree completely that the open and transparent process, the open process part, which has been increased so dramatically by actions of all the departments, the town manager, the School Department, so that compared when I moved here 14 years ago, the amount of information that we have available at our fingertips online is absolutely spectacular. And I only want to have, and I look forward to working with Mr. Viskey, Mr. Greco, and the board towards having that be also true for the Contributory Retirement Board, and welcome their agreement to that, to the same. That's about it. Thank you.
Ms. Memmon?
Zerine Memmon, Precinct 21. Granted, what you just said about, Gordon said about all this money in retirement and so forth, I've been involved with mass peace action, and we've been dealing with nuclear weapon eradication globally, because we feel that that is the greatest threat to humanity will cause winter, global nuclear winters and environmental problems and so forth. So, I'd like to see the retirement funds to be invested in responsible ways, also to be considered in divestment of, into fossil fuels like the colleges are doing. So, my two cents.
Mr. Deist? I move the question on this budget. All in favor of moving the question on this budget, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That ends debate on 24 retirement. The next one that held was insurance. Who wanted to talk about insurance? Righty, nobody. Next one held was reserve funds. Who wanted to talk about reserve funds? Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. The comment on this notes two things, the increasing it, and I'm all in favor of increasing the reserve fund. For those who are not familiar with the function of the reserve fund, this is part of our annual budget, not the stabilization budgets, that is under the control of the FinCom. And a number of years ago, I put forth an article to try to increase it, and finally, we have the wherewithal to increase it to something about 1% of our total budget, which is really a very small fund. And they do an expert job of managing it. They mentioned that they've been increasing this to help play for snow deficits. I note also that the DPW budget was also increased in this regard. Perhaps Mr. Tostie or someone could comment on that, and also answer the question whether the special ed education portion of that is also still an active entity this year.
Mr. Tostie, do you have answers to those couple of questions?
So, the question about the snow is, you're increasing this to cover deficits, but you also increase the snow in DPW budget. And is the special education comment there still operative this year?
Okay, well, we've been increasing the snow and ice budget by as much as can be done within the 3.25 limit that the manager has each year. I think we're probably up to about 80%, maybe 82% of the 10-year average, last 10-year average. What we're trying to do here is get off of the constant raising deficits, having to pay for snow and ice with a deficit that we raise on the next year's recap sheet.
I understand.
And because we didn't have much snow, well, you're in northern Maine, because we didn't have much snow this year, we didn't have to raise a deficit. So, we were able to take that out of the other line item in the five-year plan and put it into the reserve fund. So, now, we'll be able to fund the snow and ice budget from the reserve fund plus the snow and ice without having to raise a deficit. Now, of course, you know, we could get killed in a winter, there's always an exception. So, I think eliminating operating deficits is always a good thing to do, and that's the reason why we want to raise the reserve fund from the million normal level up to the million 465, which is about 1%. So, we have 1% reserve, plus it should cover between this and the snow and ice budget, we should be able to cover snow from current year revenues.
Thank you. And if you look at C1, Appendix C1, as Mr. Tostie alluded to, I can tell you, this is now the second time I've been able to stand up in front of the meeting over 13 years and point to the line in the lower right-hand corner, about five lines up, where it says "snow and ice deficit." And this year, like it was a couple of years ago, goose egg, as Mr. Tostie alluded to. So, that means we had a very light year, and we did not, there was only one budget that we can run a deficit on based upon mass general law, and that's our snow and ice removal. And I guess the special education stuff is not operative this year.
Correct.
Oh, thank you. While I'm up here, since it's related to the FinCom, to conserve time, many years, over the last many years, the concept, and it's usually mentioned in the FinCom report, although- although I don't know it was mentioned this year, concept of our structural deficit, which addresses Mr. O'Day's issue that he was raised earlier, was quoted at being two, two and a half million dollars. I think with all the new growth and other, other growth of revenues, perhaps over the next year, that needs to be reexamined. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the reserve fund? Seeing none. Water and sewer. Who wanted to talk about water and sewer? There's no, I had a hold on water and sewer. None? Okay, move on. Ed Burns Arena, someone had a hold. And that's it. We've now gone through all the budgets and all the holds. We're gonna take one big vote on all of the budgets. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Finance Committee? As amended, please say yeah. Oh. Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. Old habits die hard.
What order?
Sir?
All right, don't we have to take a vote on the Finance Committee's second proposal?
That's on Article 56. We took it on 35 for the school budget increase. The second article, looking at his report, is Article 56. Okay? Very good. So ready, as soon as you're ready, Mr. Lathwood. All in favor to recommend a vote of the Finance Committee as amended, please vote one for yes, two for no. Oh. That was real quick, 20 seconds. You didn't lose the clickers again, did you?
There was a computer glitch last week.
Uh-oh. We'll give Tim 20 seconds. Okay, here we go. All right. Let's do it the old-fashioned way while he figures it out. You wanna wait? All in favor to recommend a vote of the Finance Committee? As amended, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. That closes Article 35, brings us to Article 36. Sir? Oh, there was? It was a near-unanimous vote. And I so declare it. That closes Article 35. Did you make that correction, Mr. Clerk? It's a near-unanimous vote. Article 36, capital budgets. We have force a recommended vote of the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. Mr. Foskett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charlie Foskett, Precinct 8 and Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. Article, the article that's before you is Article 36 in the Finance Committee Report. That's the official article that's before you. This is also described in the, in the capital report that was provided to you at the back of the room. How are we doing? Good. So the first thing I'd like to do... Oh, it's not working.
Can I just say next slide and change the floor?
Sure. Next slide, please. This is just the topics that we're gonna discuss briefly tonight. The membership of the Capital Planning Committee, projects completed in progress, major projects in the five-year plan, Community Preservation Act, the debt exclusion vote, and future debt vocation, debt, future debt burdens, and our recommendation on the capital budget. Next slide, please. So, this is a list of the members of the Capital Planning Committee, and I'd like to ask them to stand as I read their names. I know that some of them are not here. Steven Andrew, Sandy Poehler, Michael Morris, Richard Viskey, Tony Lionetta, Eve Margolis, I know is not here, Diane Johnson, Brian Rarig, and Barbara Thornton. These people start working in September, and normally they finish up in January, February. This year, they work almost right up to this town meeting. And I want to express my thanks for their strong efforts. Thank you. The slide behind me here just shows a list of projects completed and in progress. Actually, in the report of the Permanent Town Building Committee, you heard about some of these and saw some nice pictures of the central fire station. Also, the Spy Pond Tennis Court reconstruction's complete. We've completed the planning phase of a new voice-over IP system for telephone communications in the town. There are extensive roadway projects underway, and we have the ongoing 40-year program replacement of water and sewer. And there are also other projects underway, which you can see on the slide behind me. I'm not gonna go through them all, but I will note that the construction and the renovation of the Stratton is underway. Next slide, please. The major projects in the fiscal year 2017 to 2021 plan include the Stratton School renovation, which you voted at the special town meeting in January. We also plan a major renovation of the DPW facility, which is near the high school. We're looking at planning an improvement of the senior center and other buildings in the specific block area. There'll be some improvements in the rolling stock of the fire department. Ladder number one is being replaced with a new tower unit. That's a unit where there's a little pedestal on the top of a tower that a firefighter can stand in when he's working. We are replacing, this question came up earlier in town meeting, we are replacing the town receivables package, both with money that the town meeting previously voted and which is voted in this capital plan. We have a continuing investment on the order of $400,000 a year in educational IT programs, and that's planned to continue through most of the five-year fiscal plan. You'll also see a big jump in investment in sidewalk repair. We're trying to get that number up to about $500,000 a year. We've met it in some of the years in the five-year plan, but not every year. And upgrades to the Ed Burns Arena. Next slide, please. We just wanted to say a word about the Community Preservation Act Committee. CPAC invited the Capital Planning Committee to attend the presentation on their project review and recommendations. We found both the CPAC process, which is in its first year, to be excellent, and the recommendations to be of high merit. So the, while this Community Preservation Committee will independently report to town meeting, the Capital Planning Committee urges your report of their, your support, rather, of their recommendations. Next slide, please. So, the Capital Planning Committee did not take a vote or take a position on any of the specific projects, the expansion of the Arlington High School or the elementary school programs or Minuteman, because the town, as provided by law, set up special committees to study and make recommendations on those programs. And some of them have already been voted at this town meeting. But without any, without endorsing any specific authorization, we do recommend that if authorizations are made by town meeting, that they should be excluded in the debt exclusion on June 14th, because the magnitude of these debt authorizations and the debt burden on the town exceeds the ability of the town to pay for these within Proposition 2 and 1/2. Next slide, please. Inside the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. The slide behind me, just as a little bit of a cautionary note, shows the increase that we see coming up in the total debt balances as we go forward towards fiscal year 21. In the past, the balances have been along the lines of less than, less than $100 million a year. And we see this growing to in excess of $200 million outstanding debt, not per year, but total outstanding debt. And we have to think carefully about how we do this and how we fund it and what our future budget looks like, because this can have two effects. One, it can affect our, our debt rating by the rating agencies, which might affect how much interest we have to pay in servicing the debt. And secondly, you know, every expenditure is only $75 per household, but if you have enough of them, it gets pretty high. And we run the risk of voter fatigue at some point or taxpayer fatigue. Next slide, please. This final slide is just a summary of the five-year plan, and I just want to point out that under the guidance of the Finance Committee, we try to limit our expenditures to within 5% of the adjusted non-exempt budget. And you can see we're at 4.99% in fiscal year 17 and 4.97% over the entire five years. So, we respectfully ask for your favorable action on the capital budget as presented in Article 36 of the Finance Committee Report. 17 seconds to go, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Leonard, Precinct 17. Just a quick couple of points, if I may. On page one of Exhibit 5, under Health and Human Services, its senior center feasibility study, we appropriated $25,000. My question is, was that study ever done? And where could somebody go to see the results of the study?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. The study was performed, it's in draft format, has been provided to me and the Director of Health and Human Services. Final copy should be available to the public and the feasibility study committee probably within the next week or two. So we'll certainly have that posted on the town website.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Exhibit 5, Page 3 of 4, sidewalks and curbstones. Mr. Foskett just mentioned about the figure of $500,000 going to be appropriated in 2017. I wonder if somebody could answer how that, if it's roughly, how that money would be distributed in regards to the town with like, would it be more so for the business, the residential area? Would it be more so for repair? Would it be more so for new? Or would it be just scattered all over the place?
Mr. Radamacher?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works. Some of the funds will be used in a different manner. Some will be to assist in paving projects, to repair sidewalk damage in conjunction with those. And other portions of that funding will be used to repair sidewalk as standalone projects in areas of higher need, where we've determined there's a greater population utilizing a particular sidewalk that is in bad condition. So we're going to go through an evaluation process to do best allocate those funds.
So it could be spread around the three main parts of town?
Correct.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Moderator, on that same page with Public Works Property Division, Town Hall renovations, if I'm reading this right, it's basically saying $100,000 is appropriated for 2017. I wonder if somebody could tell us what those renovations would be?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. The approach for Town Hall and the capital budget, a little different than most of our project, has not been one large renovation project, but rather putting a certain funding amount in the capital budget over a number of years. For 2017, our top priority is to go out and design and then hopefully implement a resetting of the stones in front of Town Hall to make a safer, more accessible entrance to Town Hall.
I wonder, Mr. Moderator, maybe through the Town Manager or somebody else, could, on more than one occasion this past winter, employees of the Town Hall were forced to work under certain conditions that they had no heat in the building. They had to actually work with their coats on during the course of their eight-hour day. I wonder if some of that $100,000 could possibly go to solve a problem that existed that maybe they will not be forced to work under those conditions in the future?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I don't remember if we kept people here in a cold building all day, but I know there was a day where the heat didn't work and we had some decisions to make. But we can certainly see if any of these funds are available to allocate the necessary HVAC upgrades. That's, that's a fair recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stamps?
Susan Stamps, Precinct 3. I had a question about the, on Exhibit 1, the page 2 of 3, under Public Works Property Division, it says DPW facility architectural design, $1 million. And I'm just wondering what the plan is for the DPW facility? I've talked to several people at town meeting, nobody seems to know about this, so...
Michael Radamacher, Director of Public Works. Within the past few years, we had a study conducted of the facility to determine the condition and necessary improvements to bring it up to code. It highlighted a significant amount of repair needed, and this $1 million will be used to do the design, to design those repairs.
Are there any projections as to how much the project would ultimately cost?
Currently, right now, in the capital plan, in the five-year plan, in three or four years out, is $10 million. But once the design is complete, I imagine that number may change.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jamison?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I have two questions on the components of Table 1. I am sorry to ask Mr. Foskett again. What are the antenna funds and the Ed Burns and the, I guess, urban renewal? And my particular, my question is, can any of those funds, are any of those funds required? Or can they be used for renovation of parks and playgrounds?
Mr. Foskett?
Antenna funds, well, obviously the Ed Burns, I don't know where the adjustment comes from, and any of the other items listed there that offsets, can those offsets be used to fund playground or recreational refurbs?
So, the antenna funds are used for parks and recreation. That's the only use that they're allowed to be used for.
Okay.
The adjustment for Ed Burns is the, the Ed Burns Arena is a enterprise fund. And, and the arrangement that we have in general with the Recreation Department and the Ed Burns Arena Enterprise Fund is that they pay 50% of the debt service out of their retained earnings and the town pays the other 50%. It's not retained earnings, but whatever the proper term is for the surplus in the enterprise fund. So that adjustment is their contribution to the debt service that we're carrying in the budget.
Okay. Ms. Moderator, if I may, a follow-up question on antenna funds?
Yes, sir.
At least as new expenditures, I don't see that level of funding being applied to the parks this year.
The substantial portion of what we would normally spend on parks and recreation qualify for Community Preservation Act funds.
Okay, so you bring up my next question.
So we, we have, can I answer the question?
Yes.
Okay. So, so what we have done is identified all the Community Preservation Act qualified requests and have determined to wait and see what the Community Preservation Act Committee makes in terms of decisions and recommendations. The funds that you see here being, are defraying bond costs for Recreation Department expenses that have been previously incurred.
Okay. So, this, you raised the question that I raised last year for me, Mr. Foskett, and I thank you. So this, you raised the question that I raised last year for me, Mr. Foskett, and I thank you. So I, last year, I expressed my discontent with the time that it's taken for some of these parks and recreation areas to be renovated. I am very happy that CPA Plan, a proposal, does finally, after many, many, many years, or the, maybe as much as 10 years, schedule the Robbins Farm, second portion of that to be renovated. However, I am greatly distressed that note, that the capital plan is not seeing fit to allocate in parallel the renovation of a different park or a recreation facility. I did not vote personally for the CPA and its recreation component and all the other wonderful components to have it be used as a way for the capital plan to defer costs I believe they should be committing to. I voted for it as a way to augment the capital plan. And so I hope that the capital plan, the Town Manager, and all the people required, involved in formulating the capital plan will consider very strongly these comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Memmon?
Serena Memmon, Precinct 21. I have a question for you, Mr. Moderator, to your director, who you would like. I'm glad to see the fire station was built in 2015. It's $6 million. But I had a question about the water heaters that are constructed in there. I was wondering if somebody could address that for me? Do you want me to just ask the question?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
I had a question about the water heaters. Can somebody tell me the details and what decisions were used, what criteria were used to put in three water heaters for the fire station? I believe there are three when I took a tour. Two tanked and one tankless.
Do you know anything about that, chief?
Bob Jepson, Fire Chief. Not exactly sure your question, but as to the best of my knowledge, there's one water heater in fire, in central fire station.
When I took the tour, they were given, they showed me tanked as well as non-tankless. So do you have a tankless or a tanked water heater?
We have a tanked water heater, one tanked. And then there are two, what's the term, Adam, on the heaters? Yeah, with the boilers. Condensing boilers, two condensing boilers, redundant. Those are the things that are hanging on the wall. That may look like tankless water heaters, but there is one water heater in the building.
That was information I was given by your tour, so I was just going on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not you personally, but somebody at the fire station.
Mr. Fisher?
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. I live on Lombard Road. And again, a couple neighbors keep asking me when the concrete bleachers along Lombard Terrace for the baseball fields, it's by Pond Field, are going to be renovated. Is that going to be under the capital plan? Is that how that will be financed when it someday happens? And is there any plan for that?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Public Works Director, Mr. Radamacher and I have been working and discussing those bleachers and actually that whole area in its entirety. There has been an assessment performed, and we're working to have an application ready for the Community Preservation Committee for this upcoming cycle next year. Thank you.
Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Fuller, Precinct 20. Two questions. First, on Page 8 of the committee's report, it mentions under Stratton Financing Plan, expected asset sale contribution, $1 million. I believe this is the former Veterans Hall at 1207 Mass Ave that the town owns. I wonder if you, through you, Mr. Moderator, someone can explain how that sale is going?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. The Board of Selectmen has authorized the Town Council and myself to draft an RFP. We hopefully will have that back before then at, probably not their meeting this next Monday, but the meeting following that in early June. We'll put an RFP on the street and hopefully be able to have some competitive offers back in July. It'll take us a little while to actually finalize the transaction, but we're hopefully within striking distance now.
Okay. Thank you. Is the $1 million figure a reasonable amount to expect for the sale of that building and land?
So based on past appraisals and then some conversations with some realtors in the area, we set a bottom line price, the Board of Selectmen set a bottom or minimum price to put in the RFP of $750,000. But based on the fact that one of the adjoining parcels is also either currently or soon to be for sale, I think the redevelopment opportunity could make it an attractive parcel for someone.
Good. I'll cross my fingers and hope it happens soon.
Thank you.
Second question on, in Part 1 of the actual recommended vote, line 40, earmarks $120,000 for photocopiers in the schools. There's also, I think, $75,000 in the school budget for copiers. I wonder if it could be explained how these two things relate to each other, why it's not all in one budget or the other.
Ms. Johnson?
Diane Johnson, Chief Financial Officer for the School Department. I would love to have the capital budget pay for all of it, but that was a battle I gave up several years ago.
Never give up.
We presently, we presently have about 41 photocopiers throughout the building. We're about to go into a new contract cycle, and we're doing a pretty intensive analysis to figure out exactly what we need and where we need it. Photocopying is a much larger part of education than it was in the past because of so much open source material available on the web. Many teachers take advantage of that. Rather than go with a workbook presented by one publisher, teachers can surf around and find the exact stuff they want and print it out, which puts a much greater strain on the photocopiers than in the past. So instead of our need for photocopying going down, it's increased. Our photocopiers also scan, and they allow us to print. So rather than using inkjet printers, which are very expensive on a per-page basis, our photocopiers are much less expensive. And the teachers have secure printing where they can send a print job to the printer, to the photocopy machine, and it doesn't print out until they go and enter a code into it so somebody else doesn't pick up their print job. So they're very essential pieces of equipment for the schools, and we do spend a lot of money on them, but we use them every day.
Yes. Well, I, you know, I hang around Dillon a lot, and I do see people waiting in line for the copier. So I agree, we need more and more better copiers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to the committee for all its good work.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. This woman way in the back, second row. Yep?
Danuta Forbes, Precinct 10. Thanks to Susan. She answered most of my questions, but then I heard, in addition to the $1 million for the DPW, there's another $10 million coming. Is that correct?
Mr. Foskett?
I have Exhibit 5, Public Works Property Division, and I see the $1 million, DPW Facility Architectural Design. And then Mr. Radamacher mentioned that later, there's going to be another $10 million?
Adam? Charlie, I think Adam has an answer for us.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. So on Exhibit 2, Page 5 of 7, at the top of the sheet, you can see that in FY '17, there's $1 million proposed for the DPW Facility Architectural Design. Then right below that, you can see DPW Facility site improvements. And follow that across, and you'll see the $10 million figure in what would be FY, there's no labels here, but FY '20, I believe. So what you see, as Mr. Radamacher described earlier, is $1 million funded for the actual architectural and design this year, and then a budgeted amount of $10 million for the actual construction project in FY '20.
Okay. That actually gives me a little pause, because as you know, soon we're going to be going through the high school feasibility study, and we're going to be deciding, do we want to renovate the high school, or is it possible to do a tear-down, which tends to be cheaper? And it just struck me, and maybe you can answer this for me. The TBW site is a really great location, and we have other parts of town that also could be renovated and fixed up. So have you thought about moving the DPW to maybe a different part of town and saving that site for a possible rebuild for the high school?
We've, we've had, I'd say, light discussions about that, but we've been unable to identify any viable site for DPW in town. I mean, you know, we're five and a half square miles, as dense as they come. To some degree, I'm sure those in the neighborhood might not agree with me, but there is a DPW facility there today. It's sort of a known quantity. You know, locating it in another neighborhood that's not had a DPW facility would be a heavy lift. And even saying that, I'm not sure where exactly we'd find that site.
Well, would it be possible to swap the site so while the high school's being rebuilt, you could, you could rebuild on that, right across from the town's court? It seems like a great location or partially, and you could split up some of the high school property for the DPW. So you could maybe stay in that area, but you could utilize that space instead of renovating it once, and then you're kind of stuck with the high school where it is.
I guess the best I can say to that is, when we go through the high school feasibility study, if reusing that space is viable and there is another place where DPW can still operate from, the feasibility study for the high school would allow us to consider that. But I don't think we can discount sort of the critical nature of DPW being to operate throughout. And, you know, any disruption to DPW service, especially in the winter, can sort of be a town shutdown-type situation pretty quickly. So we need to make sure that throughout whatever project, there is a DPW facility that's up and operating.
And I'd love to see online maybe some of the plans, because, you know, a lot of us haven't been in there, so we don't really know what it looks like inside.
Yeah. No, that's fair.
Okay.
Mr. Foskett, did you have something to add to Mr. Chapdeline's answer?
I just wanted to mention that the DPW site has been the location where there's been a lot of truck and vehicle traffic over the last, I don't know, 40 years. And as a result, there's some contamination in the ground, which makes some of your proposals more complicated.
Oh, okay. So would that mean we couldn't rebuild or build on that site of high school?
I don't know. I'm just saying it's, makes it more complicated.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. This gentleman over here in the blue shirt, yep. Pass. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Motion to terminate debate on all items under this article.
Motion to terminate debate under all items under Article 36. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Debate is terminated. Okay. We have, of course, a recommended vote of the Capital Planning Committee and the Town Manager. There's three separate votes. We're going to take each one serially because one of them involves bonding. Are you ready over there?
We said there's three votes?
Yeah. We're going to vote each one separate. Uh-oh. I'll tell you what, I'll take the first two voice vote, because they're not bonded. And the third one is bonded. Do you get, are you, okay? Are you ready on all three?
No, I'm not ready.
Okay. So get ready for the third vote. That's going to be with the clickers. We have, of course, a recommended vote on the vote number one for $11,192,533. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That's, that's the affirmative vote, and I so declare it. That ends up vote one. We have now vote two, recommended vote of. My gosh, I think it's $3,330,000? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Okay. This one's now for bonding, for $4,837,94. You all set there, Mr. Lathwood? Okay. All in favor of the recommended vote of $4,837,94, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. This is bonding, so it has to be a two-thirds vote. It's an affirmative vote, 193 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative. It is also, pass it to two-thirds. And let's see. We have the recommended votes under number 5. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's a unanimous vote on number 5. Number 6, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That is also unanimous vote. That closes Article 36. Brings us to Article 37. Rescind borrowing authorizations from previous years. Town hereby rescinds $192,000-some-odd dollars. This requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Lathwood, are you ready? Does anyone wish to discuss this? No? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Now we're going to take our.
The, did you call for a vote on item number 4 under the capital? Because I don't.
Oh, number 4. Thought I got.
The 1, 2, 3, that was the far.
Oh, number 4. I did not see number 4. We're going to go back into Article number 35. I'm sorry, everybody missed a toasty good catch. Back under Article number 36, number 4. Town is authorized, directed to apply for blah, 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 to get grants. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That is also unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I said, I said, on number 4, that is also unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That now actually does close Article 36. We just did Article 37. Let's take our 5, 7-minute break. And then we'll come back, and we're going to pick up with Article 38. Article 38, appropriation Mughar property application, some $25,000. Anyone wish to discuss it? If not, you all set? Mr. Up, well, someone does want to discuss it, sir.
Alex Bilski, Precinct 2. I've had several neighbors ask me what the current status is of the Mughar property, and I was wondering if anyone from the town could give us an update?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I suppose the best update is that, as I think most would know, that Oak Tree was granted their project eligibility letter by, by the state, by Mass Housing. And what the expectation is, is that they would next be filing with the Zoning Board of Appeals for their 40P or 40B or comprehensive permit application. It was reported, I just think this past week in The Advocate, that they are stating that they will be contesting the town's calculation that we are at the 1.5% land mass criteria that would exempt us from 40B. But to my knowledge here, tonight, they've not yet filed anything with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Procedurally, what they would do is file with the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals could choose to then declare that we were at 1.5% and either choose to deny or make alterations to their requested permit. They could then challenge that to the state, to DHCD, and then to the Housing Appeals Committee. But to date, they have not officially filed with the ZBA.
And do they have a certain time limit to get their application in?
Mr. Heim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. No, the, the, in terms of their actually filing of application, there's not some sort of pressing time limit on them. All the relevant timelines trigger once they file that application.
Thank you. Anyone else under this article? Mr. Fuller?
Thank you. Peter Fuller, Precinct 20. Usually, spending articles like this have language saying something like, "said some to be raised by the general tax and expended under the direction of the Town Manager," or whatever. So where's the money come from and who controls it?
Mr. Tostie?
Good catch. We could, just give me a sec. If I could add the word "said some to be raised by general tax and expended under the direction of the Town Manager." some to be raised by general tax and expended under the direction of the Town Manager," as a correction to the, as a addition to the FINCOM vote, Mr. Moderator?
Do you need that in writing, Madam Clerk? Yes, you could just have someone write that out, please, so Stephanie can have it. But we'll take that, and you can hand it up afterwards. So all in favor of that motion, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That motion is so amended. He's gonna write it out for us. Okay, so anyone else in this article? So we've just amended the article. So all in favor of the article as amended? Mr. Lathwood? Ready? And... Uh-oh. We'll get a quick clock this time. All in favor, please press one. Opposed, press two. It's an affirmative vote, one hundred seventy-three to six in the negative, and I so declare it. That closes Article 38 as amended. Article thirteen-nine. Recommended vote of the Finance Committee of no action on Article 39. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's an affirmative vote of no action on 39. I so declare it. That brings us to Article forty. Mr. Tosti?
There were two articles, basically the same, one in the annual town meeting and one in the special town meeting on the expenditure. Uh, this town meeting took action on the expenditure, uh, under Article Three of the special town meeting. Therefore, the Finance Committee recommends no action on Article forty.
Have a second? All in favor of no action under Article forty, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's affirmative vote of no action, and I so declare it. That ends Article forty. Brings us to Article forty-one. Uh, appropriation financing water and source, eight hundred thousand dollars for water and source, requires a two-thirds vote. Anyone want to discuss it? Mr. B, Mr. Warden?
John Warden, precinct eight. I just wanted to, um, clear the air, because there has been some concern about, uh, if, if we have any of those lead pipes transmitting water into houses, and if that's, uh, if there is any, and if, if so, is it being taken care of under this, this article? Thank you.
Was there a question there? Do you have a... Go ahead, Mr. Radamaka. Andy O'Brien, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Michael Radamaka, Director of Public Works. Uh, we have been reviewing records, uh, in Public Works to determine the extent of potential lead services. There, it's fairly inconclusive, but from our work in the field, as we have replaced water lines in the past, we find very few, if, if no actual lead services. Occasionally, there'll be a lead connector here or there, but we have not come across, um, any or a significant amount of lead services. That being said, uh, the town is soon to undertake a, a water meter replacement program where we will be entering homes to replace meters. At that time, we will be doing a survey to determine, uh, if we have lead services in homes that we are now not currently aware of. If that is the case, we will then begin a program of replacing those services.
Can I answer your question, sir? You're welcome. Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, Andy O'Brien, precinct sixteen. Um, just to, uh, kind of extend the question, you know, is also in the news, uh, Boston schools, uh, recently, they found lead in the schools. I was wondering if we've tested in our schools?
Dr. Brody?
We are in the process right now of applying for money to do more testing, um, and working with the, uh, Director of Health Services on this project, as well as our Director of Facilities. Um, we, there's been some testing, um, over the years, and we're, um, looking at exactly which, uh, buildings we need to test at this point. But yes, we are moving forward with that, um, expeditiously.
Thank you. Um, anecdotally, anecdotally, um, a couple of years ago, I worked for a large, uh, water filtration company, and, uh, before every installation, we would, uh, test the water before the installation and after. And Arlington was probably the, in terms of, you would test for, uh, total dissolved solids, and for total dissolved solids, Arlington was amongst the lowest in, in the state, roughly about eighty-five. Uh, but we did, never tested for any individual, um, element, compound, uh, or chemical, uh, but, and lead typically, you, you would test in parts per billion, uh, could be dangerous in, in those levels. Um, so I would be pretty confident that we're probably pretty good, but you, you never can tell, is, because Boston's an M, a WRA town, and their water tends to be very clean. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, precinct eleven. Uh, to extend Mr. O'Brien's extension of the, um, warrant article, I just wanted to very briefly say, I lived in East Arlington, uh, ten years ago. We had our water service tested both, uh, at the start of the morning and after, uh, some time had gone by, water had run, and we found that there was quite a bit of lead in the water when we started in the morning. That means that if anybody's listening to the, this on TV or in, in the notes later on, um, while I think water supply in Arlington is fine, uh, those of us with old pipes, which is most of us, that, in old houses, should be concerned about the first, uh, water in the morning. Thank you.
Okay, the, we got talking about the source, but all these water questions will apply to the next one. We're gonna have to go over them again. Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, precinct twelve, extending on the extensions. Um, this, to my mind, as far as the schools is, is concerned, would be an excellent, uh, use of some reserve funds appropriated by the Finance Committee. I think it fits the need, which is an unrecognized need at the time of budgeting, and I would hope that that would, the FINCOM would see, uh, their way to approving those funds, so that the testing could be completed by the start of school. And if the, um, school committee and superintendent was so lucky to get funding to support it, they could be reimbursed, uh, through those funds. Thank you very much. Again, I hope that could be completed one way or the other by the start of school in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, precinct nine, motion to terminate debate on all matters under this article.
Motion to terminate debate on all matters under the article, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Debate is terminated. It's a two-thirds vote. So we have the recommended vote of the Finance Committee for eight hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Lathwood, you ready? All in favor, please press one. When the green light goes on... Opposed, press two. One hundred and eighty-eight in the affirmative, one in the negative. It's an affirmative vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article forty-one. Brings us to Article forty-two. Water and sewer mains. Now, we just had all those questions about water. We'll assume we're all set. Anyone else wants to talk about water and sewer mains on anything else? Seeing none, Mr. Lathwood, you ready on this vote? All in favor of one point one million dollars for water mains, please press one when we get the light, and two for no. Affirmative votes, unanimous vote of one hundred and eighty-eight to zero. And so declare it, and that ends Article forty-two. The next article we have is Article forty-seven. Appropriations, water bodies. We have fifty thousand dollars for water bodies. Someone took it off the consent agenda. Who wanted to talk about water bodies? No one. Mr. Lathwood. All in favor of fifty thousand dollars for water bodies, please press one. When the light goes on, opposed, press two. Okay, press one for yes, two for no on water bodies. It's an affirmative vote, one hundred and eighty-two in the negative, and a positive two in the negative, and I so declare it, and that ends Article forty-seven. Brings us to Article forty... Let's see, forty-eight and forty-nine. We're done, fifty. It's the next one. Fifty. Appropriation, OPEB. Um, does anyone want to present on this? Have any questions? Mr. Billiff is here, if anyone has any questions. Seeing none of the peers were ready for a vote. Mr. Lathwood, are you ready? All in favor, please press one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote, unanimous vote, one hundred and eighty-eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, it's a positive vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article fifty, and brings us to Article fifty-one. Appropriation Long-Term Stabilization Fund. Um, one hundred thousand dollars into the Long-Term Stabilization Fund. Anyone want to talk about it? Seeing none, Mr. Lathwood, are you ready? I'm going too fast for him. Okay, all in favor of a hundred thousand dollars, please press one for yes, two for no. Two-thirds vote required, because we're going into a stabilization fund. One hundred and ninety in the affirmative, zero in the negative. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article fifty-one. The next article up is fifty-three. Mr. Tosti has arisen.
These are funds which the, uh, will be coming from this year's school budget to be set aside in the Special Education Stabilization Fund. The number that has been given to me by the School Department is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that will be set aside in the Special Education Stabilization Fund, together with the two hundred thousand from last year's school budget that you've already appropriated. That money can only be appropriated by this town meeting, by a two-thirds vote for special education. Uh, so recommend to you the one hundred and thirty-five thousand under Article fifty-three.
Okay, we'll administratively add one hundred and thirty-five thousand into the recommended vote that was blank. Any questions about this? Seeing none, Mr. Lathwood, are you ready? All in favor of putting one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars into the Special Education Stabilization Fund, please press one when the light goes on. Okay, here we go. One for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative vote, one, unanimous vote, one hundred eighty-six in the positive, zero in the negative. That ends Article fifty-three, and brings us to Article fifty-five. Use of free cash. I love free cash. Four million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Anybody want to talk about free cash? Mr. Lathwood? Yep. All in favor of free cash, please press one for yes, two for no. Took me years to figure out what it was. Hundred and eighty-five in the affirmative, one in the negative. It's a positive vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article fifty-five. Brings us to Article fifty-six. Mr. Tosti has arisen.
As I mentioned before you, under the school budget, uh, we added a hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars to the school budget. Uh, we now doing to reduce the, uh, money going into the stabilization fund, the fiscal stability fund, to the figure of two million, three, four, nine, nine, two, six. Two million, three, four, nine, nine, two, six.
Okay, do you have a second?
A second.
Anyone else want to talk about the stabilization fund? This fiscal stability stabilization fund. Seeing none, we have the, uh, motion to amend made by Mr. Tosti. All in favor of the motion to amend, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is so amended. We now have a force recommended vote of the, uh, Finance Committee as so amended. All in favor? Mr. Lathwood? Please press one for yes, two for no. It's an affirmative, unanimous vote, one hundred and ninety-one in the positive, zero in the negative. That ends Article fifty-six, and I so declare it. Brings us to Article fifty-seven. Appropriations Community Preservation Fund. Miss, uh...
Hello, Clarissa Ruhl.
Ms. Rowan, Mr. Helmut.
Um, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee and my vice chair.
Eric Helmut, uh, Chair, Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, first, uh, we, I move that we consider each paragraph by, denoted by the numbered votes, in the recommended vote of Article fifty-seven separately. Uh, just a brief note of explanation...
Let me get a vote on that. So we have a motion to, uh, divide the question, vote on each one of the paragraphs separately. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? We will vote on each one separately. Thank you very much. Ms., go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. We're gonna be quite, um, fast tonight, because you've had a report for a long time. We also had the projects out in the hallway. Um, there are five of us here from the committee, oh, there's six of us here, from, um, the people involved in the, the projects. And, as you know, next slide, please. Um, there are three areas of concern: open space and recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. Next slide, please. You will also notice that our projects are, um, throughout the town, and we're very pleased with that. Next slide, please. Um, we have carefully vetted, um, each project and all the projects that came to us, and we've consulted with the people we were supposed to consult with, the Finance Committee, the, um, Board of Selectment, and the Capitol Planning Committee. We're very thankful for Charlie Foskett's kind words. And now we'll go right into the five projects. Erica's given me another minute for this. We have Robbins Farm Park, the field and ADA renovations. These are right near Gordon Jamison's house, so he should be really pleased. No questions, Gordon. The second project is the Spy Pond Edge and Erosion Control Project. The third project is the Widdomore-Robbins Carriage House Rehabilitation. The fourth project is the Drake Village Window Replacement. As you know, this is a combined project with CBDG funds. And our last project is the Kimball Farmer House. We're all here to answer your questions, but I'm now going to turn it over to Eric to explain the somewhat complicated vote and budget.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Eric Helmoth, Precinct 12 and Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. If you need a copy of the report, I think most of you have it, there are a few copies on the back table, and that contains the recommended vote and also the detail about what we're going to hit very, very light, at a very high level with respect to the finances, the budget, and the votes. So every year, by state law, we are required to spend or reserve at least 10% of CPA revenues in each of the three areas, as you can see in the pie chart. And we've got that included in our vote tonight. The red area is flexible, those can be spent or reserved, and then up to 5% can be used for administrative expenses, as is detailed in the second vote in your report. Next slide. This is in your report. I know that you can't really read it on the screen, but I want to just hit the high points. We are voting tonight on the fiscal year '17 CPA revenues, similar to how the other major budgets in town, we vote based on those anticipated revenues. We estimated them conservatively. The revenues come from two sources: the local 1.5% surcharge on the net property tax after the, what's the word, after the exclusions and abatements. Abatements, thank you. Plus, a partial state match on the amount that we take in. And this year, it's estimated by the DOR to be 19%. So that's free cash, as it were. The moderator's favorite word. The page eight of the report explains the special situation about where the current revenue is being collected on the surcharge, where those are going, and when we can spend those. We welcome your questions if you have them. And I think the next slide, then. The budget also, by the way, does show at the bottom of it the cumulative percentages. So if you think about that pie chart, it shows what percentage by project area: historic preservation, housing, and recreation. It shows where the committee is recommending that with respect to the percentages. So about these, about the votes, you'll notice that we have three of them, and again, the details, all of these are in pages 10 to 12 of your report. Each of the subvotes is explained in the comments, and we'd be happy to answer questions. So we'll take each of those separately. The first vote are appropriations. Town meeting makes appropriations. The committee can only recommend, so the town meeting signs the checks. And those are appropriations for the five projects that Clarissa just mentioned and are described in detail in your reports. The second vote consists of two items, and that funds a reserve for future CPA projects that town meeting can appropriate from. And it also funds an administrative CPA expenses account as well. The third vote is a contingency only. So if the vote on, the first vote is affirmative, I need, and I will, move as a town meeting member to change, to amend, the vote that you see in the third vote to no action for reasons that are explained underneath that. But the reason for that is that because of that 10% requirement that I mentioned at the very beginning of my remarks, we have to make sure that we do that. So if any project wouldn't be funded and we fall beneath our 10% threshold for any of the three areas, we need to fix that by at least reserving dedicated funds in that amount so that we don't have to come back for a special town meeting later.
That's it. We're here to answer your questions. We have Mike Care, Leslie Mayer, Andrew Benkston, and Kathy Garnett is here from the Conservation Commission. If you have any questions whatsoever, Eric, where'd you go? Please ask them. Yes.
No, it's my turn to say yes.
Mr. Moderator.
I get to call him, and he asks questions, and I call you back.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I guess I'm in a hurry to leave for some reason.
Sir in the blue shirt, you're up. Yeah, Clarissa. He's up.
Daniel Jalka, Precinct 6, and I want to say, first of all, I'm really happy that our town adopted the CPA. It seems like a good way for us to continue to improve things that are very important to us in the town with the help of state funding that my view is we would be foolish to say no to. I am here representing Precinct 6, and at the community meetup, I had the opportunity to meet Karen Grossman, who is the Executive Director, something. She's the head honcho and friends of Spy Pond Park, I believe. And I'm a member of that group. I think it's a great group. It represents, I think, a lot of Arlington, not only from Precinct 6, but throughout the town, who recognizes that Spy Pond is kind of a special treasure for the town. It's kind of special, I think, based on where it's located. It's something that many people from the town are aware of and pass through. They're going on the bike path into town, into Alewee. Also, people who are coming to our town from outside, from Cambridge, if they just barely even dip into Arlington, one of the first things they see is Spy Pond, something that I think warrants, among many other treasures of the town, warrants being protected. And so I'm really glad to see that one of the things that the CPA has chosen to invest, or to try to invest in, is the erosion control. And if you go to Spy Pond Park, it's so beautiful, but if you go there, you can't help but notice there are fences around the shore in the park where beautiful, charming little signs made by children and designed by children have implored people not to pass the fences, not to step on the shore, not to erode the shoreline. And that's not really working. I see people over there all the time who are passing those fences and seeming to not be concerned or not educated about the fact that that might be damaging this town treasure. So I think that this is, you know, one of the most modest expenditures as part of this article, but I just wanted to get up as a member of Precinct 6, as a representative of the people who live there, but also for the whole town. I think we all recognize, you know, it's the high school mascot, I think. And... Are it Spy Ponder's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm kind of new here. I've only been here for five years. I don't know anything except my kids will be going to Arlington High School unless they go to Minuteman, which would also be great. And one of the things I learned, actually, in the Q and A at this neighborhood meetup was that this modest investment, this $50,000, give or take, investment in the erosion control feasibility study, will not only give guidance to the town to understand what it can do to help protect this resource, but as you know, the vast majority of the shore on Spy Pond is not owned by the town, it's owned by private property owners, many of whom would jump at the chance to take common sense measures, I think, to protect this valuable part of their property. And one of the, at least alluded to advantages of funding this, is that the information we get from the professionals who conduct this study will be shared with property owners. So for example, if there's advice to put a certain material at the shore or to plant a certain kind of plant that maybe will, I don't know, I don't know how this works, but you know, things happen, process enzymes happen, whatever, filter out the contaminants that are coming into the water. It will be an opportunity for the town to give information to all the people who own that valuable shorefront on Spy Pond. So in closing, I would just like to say, again, I'm really happy that we, as a community, chose to take advantage of the CPA because it seems like it's just a great opportunity for us to get more value than we put, than we have to pay for. And this and the other parts of the CPA seem like a reasonable way to spend that money. So I encourage you all to vote to approve all of the CPA budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruderman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ruderman, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, what were the administrative expenses for the Community Preservation Committee for the year just concluded?
Ms. Rowe?
There were none. We couldn't, we didn't have any money. We won't have any money until you vote on this article, and the money will start on July 1, 2016. This is the way the law is written. It's very complicated, but we didn't have any money. We had...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That answers my question.
Thank you.
The projects are excellent. I think they're all worthy, they're all, you know, more than qualified for support of these funds. Mr. Moderator, if the committee had no expenses for the past year, why is the committee asking for the maximum amount allowed under the enabling legislation, that being 5% or more than $77,000 for administrative expenses going forward when they had no administrative expenses in the last year and still produced this list of very well-qualified and detailed projects?
I got you, Paul. Ms. Rowe?
Thank you. We are hoping that this expenditure will keep the kinds of expenses that we actually had this year to a minimum because we've had someone from the town manager's office doing all the administrative work for us, not paid out of this budget because it can't be. The idea that we could have somebody in the town manager's office overseeing these, hopefully these five projects, in the next year is something that we haven't had to go through yet. The idea for the expenses budget is really to take the time and expense away from the other town budgets and personnel so that it can be devoted to just the Community Preservation Act.
I believe the answer to my first question, Mr. Moderator, was in the last year, 0. Is that correct?
Mr. Tosti? Yes, Mr. Tosti's going to tell you, sir.
The CPA committee did not have any expenses because they didn't have any money. All the expenses were absorbed by the town. So one of the town manager's personnel had to be there at all the meetings in handling all the administrative work, and the manager's office had to handle that. I believe in addition, the IT department and the Treasurers Department had to absorb all of the software expenses because of the new 1.5%. So there were expenses. They didn't get paid by the CPA committee, they got absorbed by the town, and the town can't keep doing that.
So this situation shall not prevail in the future. Am I correct in presuming that?
I would just...
The situation of other town budgets covering the administrative expenses?
Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Helmoth, Vice Chair of the CPAC. As explained in the comment to vote 2, the intent of the expenses account is to protect the town budget from expenses that are, that come from CPA wherever is allowable by law to prevent many of the situations that Mr. Tosti just said. The law also says, and I think this was relevant to your question, Mr. Ruderman, the law also says that any unspent appropriated expenses account roll back to the general CPA fund. So it will be treated as a reserve fund to be only, only to be used as much as necessary, but to be used as much as possible to offset unavoidable expenses that come from CPA. And those are, some of the possible ones are enumerated into the comment under that vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That answers my questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Trembley? Ed?
Ed Trembley, Precinct 19. I see there's $200,000 to, given to restore the Kimball House. I'm curious if the 1.4 something or other million dollars includes the purchase price of the house.
Ms. Rowe?
No, it cannot and does not. Like many affordable housing projects, the small amount that the Community Preservation Act funds are going to is one of the many pieces that the Arlington Housing Corporation has used to acquire the house, to do the building of the house. This is actually the last piece of their construction project, and it actually qualifies both as affordable housing and historic preservation, but we're putting it down as affordable housing.
So that 1.4 million dollars was to renovate the house? It didn't include the purchase price? Did I hear you right?
Do you want, could, Mr. Moderator, could Pam Hallett come up and answer that question?
Yes. If someone has more information for us, that's great.
Pam Hallett from Precinct 21, also Executive Director of the Housing Corporation of Arlington. The 1.5 does include the purchase price as well.
Oh, okay.
1.4.
So that 400 and something or other thousand dollars per unit is the finished total cost?
Total development cost, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Precinct 10, and a past president of the Friends of Robbins Farm Park. It was 2002 when we first started getting ready for the community build for the playground, which happened in 2003, which Gordon Jamison was kind enough to work with myself on organizing that. I carried my one-year-old son in a backpack that weekend while we did the community build. He is entering the high school next year, and the second phase still hasn't happened. So I'm very excited that the funds are being expended, are being proposed for this project, and I strongly encourage everyone to vote in favor. Thank you.
This gentleman right here in this blue shirt, sir.
Phil Goff, Precinct 7. I move to terminate debate on this and all matters before.
Motion to terminate debate in the article. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It is a majority, it's a two-thirds vote, and I so declare it. That brings us to the recommended votes. We have three separate and individual votes under this article. We'll vote number one first. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Finance Committee? Please press 1. Community Preservation Committee, I'm sorry. All in favor of the recommended vote of the Community Preservation Committee? Please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's affirmative vote, 171 in the positive, 12 in the negative. Now we have the second part of the vote. All in favor of the recommended vote, as printed in our reports? Please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. That is affirmative vote as well, 171 in the positive, 15 in the negative. Mr. Helmoth, do you want to amend your third vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Helmoth, Vice Chair of the CPAC. I move to amend the third vote recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to no action.
Okay, anyone wish to discuss that? We have a first motion to amend the third vote from that printed in our report to no action. All in favor of that amendment, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? It is so amended. Mr. Lathwood, are you ready in the recommended vote of no action? All in favor of no action on the third vote, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. That's 185 in the affirmative on no action, one in the negative. That ends Article 58. I wish to personally thank the CPA Committee, Ms. Rowe, and Mr. Helmoth for their hard work over the past year. That brings us to Article 59. Mr. Darcy. I got you on the list, Mr. ...
Paul Schlickman.
Oh, you're going to introduce her? Okay, Mr. Schlickman.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I'd like to introduce Darcy Devney, a resident of the town, to speak on this resolution.
Ms. Devney.
Hi, Darcy Devney, Precinct 4. I'm here on behalf of the Arlington Disability Commission. I'm sorry that my partner, who has worked very hard on this proposal, Cynthia DeAngelis, is not able to be with us tonight. She's ill. So what is Article 59? It's all about an adequate number of handicapped parking spaces in the optimal places. Why is the Disability Commission sponsoring this article? Three reasons: statistics, surveys, and complaints. For statistics, as you can see, the Massachusetts Disability Commission recommends a minimum of 5% handicap parking spaces in business areas on street parking, and we looked at various other statistics. In Massachusetts, the number of handicap parking places, placards, is at about 10% of the number of cars that are registered. In Arlington, it's at about 6.3%. We also looked at ambulatory difficulties reported to the Census Bureau, and in 2013, again, in Massachusetts as a whole, at 6.2%. And in Arlington, for people over the age of 65, it is at 16% for ambulatory disabilities. So that's statistics. Surveys, you may remember, last year's Vision 2020 survey had a page of questions about disability access. One of them was about handicap parking and the ease of finding it in the various business districts. As you can see, the answer is, it was kind of difficult, especially in East Arlington. And you could also, if you looked at this year's 2020 survey, the one with the purple cover and back, you can see that increasing the handicap parking at the Senior Center was one of the top three priorities for 38% of the visitors to the Senior Center. So we looked at the on-street parking in business districts to count it, to see what kind of percent we had here in Arlington. Basically, when we talk about on-street parking in business districts, we're talking from the Cambridge Line of Massachusetts Ave all the way up to about Trader Joe's in the Heights and an area around the center that's also considered business that isn't just right on Massal, like Medford Street and so forth. And we came up with about 1,000, more than 1,000 spaces, and how many of those were handicapped parking spaces? 23 out of more than 1,000. So that's 2.3%. We looked at the fraction of the HP spaces by neighborhood to see if it got any better neighborhood by neighborhood, and the answer was, again, no. You could see it's still under 3%, and it is, again, in the east, the worst at 2%. Just quickly, we're going to go through. The east currently has four handicap spaces. The center currently has 11. Remember, these are handicapped, on-street parking, in the business districts. We're not talking about residential. And in the Heights, which is the best, we have a whole eight handicap parking spaces out of 300 and some odd. So again, if we look at those statistics, we're way below the minimum that we should have according to the Massachusetts Office of Disability, and we are, in fact, quite a bit below some of the statistics that apply to Arlington specifically. So we went and looked at what would it look like if we tried to get up to 5% or more handicap parking spaces? And we looked at some placement criteria, which is kind of complicated. You have to go sort of curb by curb, block by block, because everything's different in Arlington. No block is alike. But we also did a lot of outreach, and our outreach consisted of things like two articles in the Arlington Advocate. Of course, we emailed to the Arlington Email List, which has more than 5,000 subscribers. We talked to businesses. We started in the east, talking to businesses, and we're going to be talking to, and we emailed to businesses, and the VOS said and unanimously approved. We have outreach planned for the future, which is tables at the Feast of the East and the Town Day, and we're going to do ground-level walk shops of the three business districts, which means going block by block again and talking specifically to business owners and so forth. And the eventual outcome of this, I hope, is at least 5% business district handicap parking, and we're going to have an online parking map, which will include the regular parking spaces and the handicap parking spaces. So anyone who wants to bring their grandmother to Arlington, anyone who wants to visit Arlington, can look in advance and see where they can get a handicap parking space to go visit some of our shops and stores. So the goal, an adequate number of handicap parking spaces in the optimal places. You can see why. I just wanted to say thanks to two, a bunch of people, but specifically, our DPW Director, Mike Rattamaker, is actually a member of the Disability Commission, and he's been terrific on logistics and some real practical stuff. And our GIS Director, Adam Karowski, who is the one who worked with the map tools and figured that all out for us and is going to help us get it online. That was all the thank yous. So questions?
If there's questions, I'll get them and ask you.
Okay. I hope you vote yes.
Okay, anybody wish to discuss Article 59? Seeing none, looks like we're ready for a vote. You are all set. Soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready. All in favor of the recommended resolution of the Board of Selectmen, as printed in their report, press one for yes and two for no. It's an affirmative vote, 183 in the positive, four in the negative. That ends Article 59. Brings us to Article 60. Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Leonard, Precinct 17. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Moderator, when Precinct 17 approached the Selectmen's Office in January of 2014, at that particular time, we asked about the possibility of going back to the Highland Station. We were told at that particular time, probably not due to the fact that it was not handicap-accessible. We found that interesting because we were under the impression that mostly all buildings nowadays would be handicap-accessible. We then asked about what about the possibility for Town Hall? The answer to that was, Precinct 8 and 10 were voting there now, and parking might be an issue if another precinct was added. We also found that very interesting, seeing as how that for so many years, we've been crammed up into the Stratton School with 13 and 15, two other precincts, and parking up there is very limited.
Can't hear him?
We then turned around and asked, what about the Senior Center? At that particular time, we did get a very nice letter from the Director of the Planning and Community Development outlining why, with all the occasions that are going on at the Senior Center, it would be very doubtful to have a precinct there. I think at this particular time, it's important to mention that when a precinct is moved from one location to the other, it is required by the state that everybody who is a registered voter in that precinct is to be notified of such a move. We have asked the Office of the Board of Selectmen for a copy of that notice that would have went out in either 2004 or 2005. As of this evening, we have not received anything. It has been two years. Another point of information is that when the Pierce School, which housed Precinct 19 and 21, were moved due to the construction for the Pierce School, those two precincts were moved to the skating rink on Summer Street. The skating rink, by the way, is located in Precinct 17. Now, once again, with the Stratton School being under construction and being closed, Precinct 17 is on the move again. We've been notified that Precinct 17 is now going to be moved into the Pierce to be jammed with the 19 and 21 precincts, which is already there, and parking should prove to be interesting. You ask, what about 13 and 15? 13 and 15, by the way, are going to be moved to the skating rink on Summer Street, which is Precinct 17. Mr. Moderator, in the master plan, the master plan states on page 22 that today, the over-55 age group accounts for 28% of Arlington's total population, and the number of seniors is expected to increase more dramatically. Also, in the master plan on page 12, it talks about encouraging more walking in the town of Arlington. It doesn't include, as far as I can see, encouraging climbing uphill to exercise your right to vote. Ladies and gentlemen of Town Meeting, tonight, I request, I urge, and I just ask, could you please support the resolution in front of you, and let's do whatever we can to bring Precinct 17 back into Precinct 17? Thank you very much.
Mr. Leonard's made a substitute motion. We have a second. Thank you. Mr. Jefferson?
Bob Jefferson, Fire Chief. Just would like to quickly state a few points. This issue's been discussed at length over the past year or so. Several memos that I addressed to the Board of Selectmen in regards to voting at the Highland Station, as well as appearing at a Selectmen's meeting that Mr. Leonard presented it to, to state the reasons why I feel it's not a good solution to have voting at the Highland Fire Station. At that meeting, there was a 5-0 vote against Mr. Leonard's proposal for a Town Meeting warrant article, to which he brought you a resolution tonight. I really don't want to be the person standing between you and getting out of here on the last article, but just if I could quickly, the reasons that I don't feel it's conducive to voting in the Highland Station is for someone who actually works in that station and knows what that station is about and the conditions in there and why it's not a good station to vote in. Back when they were voting in the Highland Station, prior to the remodel, I was a house captain down there. I was stationed down there for about 15 years. I worked most of the tours that required us to be there while the voting was going on. Firefighters never minded voting going on in that station. I could sit there, though, daily and listen to the people there, that were there for 14 hours a day, complain about being in a garage, about the smell of diesel, about the smell of oil, about the smell of gasoline, about the bells going off, about the horns going off, about the people coming and going, about the heat conditions in a garage, which is still the same situation we have today. The Highland Station, although remodeled, is still a garage that houses vehicles. It still has the smell of diesel, even though we have a state-of-the-art climate event system, which takes the diesel exhaust from the trucks out of the building, it still has that smell. It still has oil on the floor. It still has, it's a cement floor that's porous, that absorbs those chemicals, and it doesn't go away, no matter how often we clean those floors. The floors are not level. They are concave so that the water from the trucks, when they're washed or cleaned, drains into floor drains that are in the floor. We lost over one-third of the apparatus flow when we remodeled for both gear storage and for other storage in the building. So now that building, that, again, was a voting precinct in the past, is now a much smaller area. We, it would be my intention that even if voting was moved back into the Highland Station, that that, that station continue to operate there, even if it's just for that one day, respawns in the districts that they respond to. So it would be my intention to leave those pieces there. We could take the pieces out. Hopefully, the weather would be cooperative, and we wouldn't have to worry about freezing of the apparatus or anything, but the people would still be there. They would still exit and enter out of the building. The entryway into the building, Mr. Leonard talks about the handicapped accessibility, the entryway into the building, although maybe level, is not a very wide entryway, and it's not conducive to somebody who may have restrictions with their mobility in getting into the building. I could go on and on. I'm telling you, as the fire chief, I've been over this. We've researched it. We've met with the Board of Selectmen to talk about it. I would strongly suggest that you vote no on this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kleiman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ironically, I stand to support Mr. Leonard and what the chief said. I'm sorry, can't hear you. The problem that we have, oh, I'm sorry, Stuart Kleiman, Precinct 1. The problem we have is, and I put saw in writing that this did not really affect voter turnout, but we don't have enough people to vote anyway. That's the problem. And if we make it more difficult, they won't. And I agree, the fire station should not be used. So I have a minor change, which would be in the fourth paragraph, to take out the Highland Fire Station, to say, so it would read, return the Precinct 17 polling place to a venue located within the precinct boundaries. I want to make it easier for people to vote. Doesn't have to be the fire station, but it should be somewhere in the precinct. And thank you very much.
Very well. I've got a second on that motion. Mr. Moore?
Christopher Moore, Precinct 14. I move to terminate debate on the article.
A motion to terminate debate in the article and all matters under it?
Yes.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Okay, so we, the debate's two-thirds vote, and debate is terminated. We have first Mr. Kleiman's motion to amend, Mr. Leonard's substitute motion to eliminate the words "to the Highland Fire Station located at 1007 Massal, comma, or." All in favor of that amendment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
It is so amended. We now have before us Mr. Leonard's substitute motion. All in favor of Mr. Leonard's substitute motion, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
Chairs in doubt, Mr. Lathwood. All in favor of Mr. Leonard's substitute motion, as amended, please press one for yes, two for no. On the substitute, yes, this is to substitute.
As amended.
As amended. It's an affirmative vote, 108 in the positive, 69 in... 108 in the positive, 69 in the negative. So we now have the substituted vote of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Leonard's, all in favor of the substituted motion, please vote one for yes, two for no. Recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen, as amended by Mr. Leonard's motion. So we just substituted the recommended vote of no action with Mr. Leonard's substitute. And now we're voting on the final vote. We just voted. We voted Kleiman amended it. Then we voted Leonard's to substitute. Now we're going to vote on the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen as substituted by Mr. Leonard's motion. So if you want to make this motion to resolve that we want to tell the Board of Selectmen they should do this, which is your choice, you would vote one, or you would vote two for no. So Mr. Lathwood? One for yes, two for no, on Mr. Leonard's substituted motion. It's an affirmative vote. 109 in the positive, 67 in the negative, and I so declare it. Mr. Tosti? Who spoke? Yes, sir. You can make a motion to reconsider. Well, you got to get someone who did. I thought I had explained it. I don't see anybody standing to reconsider. Mr. Tosti, you're up.
I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
All in favor of taking Article 3 from the table, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? Article 3 is on table. Mr. Tosti?
I move that the annual Town Meeting be dissolved.
All in favor of dissolving the annual Town Meeting of 2016, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed?